I hope that you're joining us tonight. We'll follow the meeting order at 6:36. I'd like everyone to join us in the
Reporting in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any adjustments or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we rearrange some of the items on the agenda tonight. That we move item number five down to item number six, move item number six up to item number five. And then after item number six, we will do item fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then continue on in order. So we'll have the National Guard presentation, the community award presentation, then the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, which involves our account, and then we'll move to the audit.
Okay. Does anyone have any public comments to that, any concerns? How much of the favor of that change, say that?
Aye.
You want to vote? You would need help with that, so. Those changes mess me up.
Apparently two of them is never straight.
All right, folks, is there anyone who would like to make any public comments on items that are not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to National Guard presentation. Do you folks want to introduce yourselves and thank you for joining us tonight? So as everyone knows, we do have an armory here in St. Albans, manned by the National Guard, two weekends a month.
One weekend a month and two weeks a year, sorry.
So a lot of folks. About to go ahead with it.
I appreciate it. Again, introduction, so I'm Lieutenant Colonel Travis Myers. I'm the commander of the unit here in St. Albans. This is Major Sarah Flaherty, our operations officer. So really what happened was, from the area, and I was asking some folks around and just telling them what I do for the Guard. They really had no idea, you know, who we are and what we do, so I found that kind of concerning, and we wanted to really capitalize on some opportunities for us to, one, get more involved in the community and get our faces back out there for a couple of strategic reasons, but really, part of our mission is to help serve both our country and our community, which is St. Albans, which we exist. So that was really the kind of the purpose. Really, we just wanted to give you a quick update. We won't take too much of your time, I know it's a busy night, provide an update on kind of what some things that we've been doing over the last couple of years. Again, increase awareness and then offer our support where we can help. Once you see kind of what we're made up of, I think we can have some benefits for both you and us working together on things. And most importantly, it's just relationships. Just knowing your faces and knowing who you are, if emergencies were to happen, just knowing who we are is probably the most important reason why I came and asked to get 10 minutes of your time tonight. So that's why we're here, so hopefully we can accomplish that. So who we are, really, we are a cavalry squadron or a reconnaissance squadron, and so our federal mission, if we were to deploy to a real-world combat mission, we'd be doing like scouts and reconnaissance type mission. And that's one part of our mission, and the other part of our mission is we also train to do domestic response. And that could be everything from riot control, flood response, really the list goes on and on. We're usually just manpower to help when emergencies happen. Most recently, if you know, like the Christmas power outage that we all felt, our armories have backup power generation, and we were able to open them up and have the ability for people to either get warm or charge their phones, just simple things that could happen when your community is in crisis. One of the things that we are kind of proud of, we are a mountain reconnaissance company, so we really train on mountaineering, and that really kind of helps bring in a lot of people from a lot of outside entities that want to join our formation. Really what we are is 93 soldiers really drill out of that St. Albans Armory. We're the headquarters unit, and really we're headquarters of five different companies which are throughout Vermont. I put a little map up there, but we have armories in Newport, we have armories in Bennington, Liddenville, and Swan. Those five companies really make up my squadron that I'm in charge of. So if we were to deploy, all five of us would get together and then go do a mission, whether it was real world or a training one. Again, like I said, we're looking for ways to increase our community engagement. We participated in Green Up Day this weekend, hopefully saw some soldiers out there picking up some trash. Looking for more ways to do that, just to get our uniforms and our soldiers out on the street, because we have some really incredible soldiers that are from St. Albans, are from the area, and they've done some pretty amazing things over the past couple of years. Just to walk through the pictures real quick, the Kosovo deployment, that's where we were for the last year, all these St. Albans soldiers deployed to Kosovo. It was a year-long mission on the border of Serbia, they were doing a peacekeeping operation. So great experience for those soldiers to see the world and see the culture. We've been, we were called upon for the Capitol Response, if you remember back in 2021, we sent a handful of soldiers down there for a month to help with that crisis that was down there. And really, I think the takeaway was our soldiers were able to mobilize, grab their go gear and get down there in 24 hours to get down to DC and support the country. I think everyone knows COVID-19, we were heavily involved, we stood up a lot of medical and hospital tents, and we did a lot of supplies. And then really, I put a picture of the St. Albans Armory in 1918 and then the St. Albans Armory in 2018, just to really, you know, show how far we've come. I know newly you've been open to the Armory recently, and we chatted with it, but really rich history in St. Albans, we just want to continue that relationship as we go through. So moving on, a couple of challenges that we are facing, obviously recruiting, the culture and the climate in, just at the Army writ large, is just struggling to find recruits. Again, what we're trying to do is just remove the stigma of what we are and what we do. I mean, we are your community, we are your soldiers, we're part-time military officers and enlisted soldiers that are just trying to serve their country and serve their unit. I think there's tons of people out there that could benefit from some sort of structure in both St. Albans and all over the United States, and we're really struggling to fill our numbers. The second challenge we have is our hometown armory concept is really starting to change. Used to, the National Guard militia used to all be from one town, and you know, we would all come together, train together. That dichotomy is kind of changing as we get, you know, more access and people, really the recruiting challenges cause us kind of reach out further. So the generational soldier that, you know, my father served, my grandfather served, is not really happening anymore. So that does two things, it brings a lot of people from outside to see the communities in Albans, which I guess is good, but it is also a struggle if we were to get called out, that our soldiers, sometimes they're several hours away. So the more soldiers I can get from St. Albans area to serve their country and serve their community, the veteran it is if we do have to respond, just go for closer. A couple of opportunities, like I said, we're here to help with community service events. We're getting involved with the sports team with Jeff Murray, and we're going to be helping run some practices for the football team, and really to get our names out there to kind of help show. I think we provide a, not a gap, but we provide a sense of structure that their younger generation just isn't getting anymore, so we just want to make sure that we're providing our leadership and our ability to kind of, you know, have values as best we can. And then the last thing I'll say is really benefits of our organization. If you're not familiar, I'm happy to get offline with anybody about some of the benefits of joining, both educational, you know, we should be paying for college if they're willing to serve their country, and we offer free tuition, free college, free on-the-job training. And that's my recruiting pitch, I'm not going to recruit anybody more, but if you have, if you do have people interested, we're always happy to have one, so. Before I hand it up to Sarah, really, if you are interested in learning more about us, invite is out. If you want to come see us train, Jericho is our main training area, I think everybody's familiar with the training site in Jericho, happy to host any, all of you to come see what your soldiers do in St. Albans, anytime, invite is out. So Sarah, do you have anything to say?
Nothing major, sir. No, the biggest thing is just not limiting our Center of Influence to a specific age group. We're happy to engage with all age groups, we provide various skill sets from medical to communications to military intelligence, things that align in the law enforcement arena, so we're always happy to extend, you know, beyond, beyond that process, mission set as well.
Couple questions from me anyway. Do you have a maximum, like 93 soldiers is where you're at, but where would you like to be?
Ninety-three is where we should be, it's not where we're at. We're hovering around 70 to 80% strength, so we're roughly only putting about 75 soldiers on the drill hall right now, so. The 93-soldier unit is what we are aiming to be. We could, sir, yeah, we could, we could go over strength, obviously. At one point, the organization here shifted and changed over the years, it used to be an armored unit, like a tank unit, I know you knew that. It used to have 100 soldiers, they used to take on trains, train on tanks. We transitioned to our current reconnaissance mission in 2005, and we don't see that changing any times.
So Marie was stationed in Taylor Park on Saturday for Green Up. How many soldiers did you have out?
I think we had like 40 soldiers. Picking up trash is something soldiers can do.
I know they cleaned me out of bags.
Yeah, I dropped all of my bags.
When you go on foreign deployments, do you perform these functions that are listed here, scouting, infantry, medics, maintenance, and snipers?
Correct. If we were to do a real-world deployment, that's what we train, one weekend a month, two weeks a year, we train on our federal mission, which is to do those tasks, infantry reconnaissance, against a real near-peer enemy, hopefully they never need us, obviously, but the rest of the time is devoted to training domestic ops. So 90% probably training federal mission, 10% training domestic operations.
And you're open to anyone contacting you?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. If you have any questions or, like, please take us up on our invite, we'd love to show you what you do, and again, there's some amazing soldiers that are in your communities that you probably just don't even know.
I would add, I think one, I don't think you mentioned, of operational happiness.
Yeah.
I've been very engaged in that for decades.
Yes.
St. Albans City School, Craig Cattell is a teacher down there, and he's been running a program, Junior Cadets.
Correct, yes.
For a little bit now, and I know that that's engaged quite a few of our younger kids. Are you still able to go to high schools when the colleges are there for the college fair, are you there alongside them?
Absolutely, you've probably seen our recruiter running around, he's an animal, he's out there, he's usually in his dress type uniform, but he's Sergeant Johnson, and he's heavily involved in the schools. So yeah, he's out there and involved in school, he actually volunteers his time and substitutes once a week at BFA's St. Albans and trying to get involved in the community.
Thank you for your service.
No, no, thank you for having us, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I got a couple of quick, very quick ones. Lieutenant Colonel Major, thank you very much for joining us. I work very closely with the National Guard here in COVID, fabulous group of folks. Men and women are very dedicated to the community. Do you have any agreements with the American Red Cross for, not necessarily for use of yours, but to help with advertising, when if you were to open it as a pool and shelter or a warming shelter or a location to charge your cell phones? How do you get the word out?
So our conduit to organizations outside is not at our level, it's up at a headquarters level, in Colchester, you probably driven by Camp Johnson, that's our state headquarters. Our facilities and maintenance organization usually is the one that coordinates for red cross usage of our armories. Really, anyone can use our armory, it's just a small little rental agreement that goes through, so. Again, we're happy to locally coordinate and advertise, but most of that coordination happens at a local level.
Okay. And several years back, I've been so long in the community here, between now and 14 years ago, when there, someone else came in and gave a presentation, they said there was someone there all day, Monday through Friday, if kids wanted to come in and use the basketball courts, they could, they could. Is that, do you still have people there, Jose?
Absolutely, there's 11, minimum 11, usually about 15, depending on operational, how much, you know, operations we're doing, but there's always full-time staff there, they're called the AGR, Active Guard Reserve soldiers there, they're there to kind of maintain the thing on Monday to Friday, yes, there'll be people there. And if they want, if, we can open it up for opportunities for people to come in and use it, as much as possible, the drill hall's not that huge. We let the Little League team use it once, and they were just, it's just so small.
And then last little question, as you know, you know way better than we know, armories around the state are closing, so we had Innesburg a few years ago, I think if Williston hasn't closed, it's closing soon. Is the National Guard still putting money into this facility, like this is still in their future plans?
I can say confidently that the 10-year plan, yes. Beyond that, I don't know, there is strategic, they're looking at the National Guard as a whole for to do more of like a regional armory concept, like mega armories?
Yep.
And if that was to come, like, I think they would be kind of strategically looked at where those are, but for the next 10 years, I can confidently say that the St. Albans Armory will be maintained and have a unit there, but beyond that, I don't know.
Thank you both for your service.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks? So on behalf of the council, thank you both for coming in, we appreciate it, and I'm sure we will be reaching out to you, we will engage for sure. Thank you for coming in.
Sir, pardon us, we don't stay for your four hours.
She's not supposed to see you sometime.
It won't be long.
Yeah, you put a lot of pressure on me here. May I have a community award presentation? All right, Lamuka, what is now number five is what was six is a community award presentation. Whether we want to start off.
Thank you for as well on the agenda tonight, we appreciate it. So part of what we're doing here tonight is, St. Albans Police Department has an awards recognition program, and one of the subcategories within that program is the civilian citation award, and that either goes to a community member or a civilian employee that has gone above and beyond with helping us, helping the community, or putting themselves in harm's way to help someone else. So I think the easiest way to do this is, I'll have Caitlin, if you could stand up up here, and I'll read the presentation of the award to her. So this is Caitlin Charland. On April 13th, 2023, approximately 8:30 in the morning, Caitlin Charland was preparing her school bus for a group of city school students who were going on a field trip. The bus was parked in the loading zone on Calvary Street at the rear of the St. Albans City School. It was at this time that a vehicle can be seen reversing out of the Mount Calvary Cemetery towards the front of the bus. Caitlin notices the vehicle and can be seen honking the horn on the bus in an effort to get the operator's attention. The vehicle continues to slowly roll over the sidewalk and toward the rear entrance of the school, where 13 children, of her size and age, and two staff persons were walking to get onto the bus. As the vehicle approached, the students, Caitlin can be seen running from the bus towards a group of children in an effort to keep them from being struck. The vehicle came within feet, if not inches, of some of the children on the walkway. Once the vehicle came to rest, Caitlin can be seen ushering the students onto the bus out of harm's way. She then gets onto the bus, backs the bus to a safe place where the children do not have to bear witness to the unfolding events. In this incident, Caitlin Charland has displayed personal courage in putting herself at risk for the sake of others. St. Albans Police Department extends their gratitude for her decision and actions during this event. So this is the second, to my knowledge, award that we have given out. They don't come lightly, and as a father and as an 18-year veteran of the St. Albans Police Department, it's something that you don't see every day. Makes me feel proud and safe to have my kids going to school in this community, that there's people like Caitlin still out there, so. On behalf of the St. Albans Police Department, we'd like you to accept that award.
Thank you.
Caitlin, now I want to give that 20-minute speech.
Just in kind of awe that I received an award, because I honestly just reacted, it was just the mother instinct in me, and what I do every day for a bus driver, it's just, I just reacted, and then I got a phone call saying that Dr., yeah, doctor, Lieutenant Weatherby had wanted to represent what I had done, so.
I would just add that that comes from the police department, but it's from the whole community, and this council, we appreciate, and Mr. Kimble's here from the Supervisory Unit, so it is a police award, but you know, it's full community recognition as well, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd do it again if I would want to, but I would if I had to.
Bill, do you want? Chip, do you want to take up a picture?
Dad, I'd like to get a picture with the officers and your whole family, that'd be great.
All right.
Chief, are you guys taking off this whole meeting?
He's got something coming up.
Oh, you got something coming?
Yeah, we have.
Yep.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move to item 50, nothing.
Or the audit, maybe?
Sarah, what's your preference?
My preference is to start with the audit presentation, since Alina is on Zoom here with us.
So we'll go to what was item number five, the overview of the audit. Alina Corset, CPA from Mariam, hello. She was with us.
I put my video up, I don't know if somebody is getting it, do you okay that?
It looks like maybe your camera cover is still on, Alina. But we can hear you, just not see, or it's.
I'll start, but in the meantime, I'll quickly see what's going on with my camera as I start this. So I, Alina Corset, I am the principal in charge of your independent financial statement audit, and I'm here to present some of the brief results of the audit, and while I'm doing the, I'm putting the private presentation, I'm going to try again to quickly. Okay, I am sorry about this video.
Do you want to come back? We can see you.
Okay, it's fine. So I'm going to share the powerful presentation right now.
We can see you, we can see you, we see you now.
It's great, thank you so much. So I will just share the screen now, and I'll move to the left. Yeah, hopefully you can see this right now. Can you see the screen?
Yes, you can.
Thank you so much. So I will be talking about summary results, as well as a quick brief form update, and then we'll go over to the financial statement audit process and some of the highlights in your financial statements, as well as the management letter. So the firm update is that effective January of this year, we merged into Markham. Markham is a national firm, about 550 partners and 4,100 employees, but it is run regionally, so we are part of the New England region of Markham. Now I put here a national footprint, so you could see it is heavily in the Northeast, which is where we are, so for all of them, I'm now part of their offices in New England. Now I'll go to the audit results, so we had another successful year of the financial statement audit. There were a lot of corrections made after field work, and we can mention that, while we talk about the management letter, there were no significant deficiencies, though all material weaknesses, we just put down some of the recommendations that we thought were important to bring to you in the management letter. Now, management is responsible to safeguard assets and ensure proper financial reporting, and our job as auditors is to provide an opinion on the financial statements, which is the responsibility of management. And financial statement audit does involve obtaining and testing audit evidence about all your amounts, material wants disclosed on the balance sheet, some payment cash flows, and also in the notes to the financial statements. Because this is a financial statement audit and not an internal control examination, we do not express an opinion on effectiveness of internal controls, however, we are required to obtain and document our understanding of internal control. And we did choose to test again in fiscal year 22 payroll and mental transactions on a CFO basis. There is a difference in the fiscal year 22 financial statements, because there was a large GASB that was implemented, it was GASB 87, it was on lease accounting and financial reporting, and I'll just give you one example, you rent a building for your police department, and where before there was such a thing as capital versus operating, which doesn't exist anymore, used to be an operating expense, just expense and public safety in your general fund expenditures, but now on general fund it remains the same, because it's a modified fund, but on your government-wide financial statements, which are converted to accrual, it shows as a lease payable for the net present value of that contract using your incremental borrowing rate, and the other side is the right of use, so it is added to your capital assets and intangible assets, as the right to use that building. Now similarly, there will be two more GASP's coming up for the fiscal year 23. They are partly similar to GASB 87, one is called the P3 and ADAs, or public-private and public-public partnerships and availability payment arrangement, and the other one is called SPIRA, that's subscription-based information technology arrangements, and a quick example of that would be, say, your a sentence office uses a mapping system, and you would have to record that as a lease payable for the term of that long-term contract, offset by right of use, the software, again, so. So this is similarly, but as to 87, but for subscriptions. The reports we issued were, of course, the opinion on your financial statements. It's good to point out that the financial statement audit opinion does not include opinion on your management discussion and analysis or your RSI, the required supplementary information. RSI includes general fund budgetary versus actual comparison, it also includes all your pension schedules. We also issued a management letter, governance letter, symbolic report, and then TIP, AUC report, too. Now, the overview of the financial statement is a little different this year, since management chose to do basic financial statements this year and not an annual comprehensive financial report, so this year it starts with the auditor's report. It's unmodified opinion, meaning there was no modifications that were needed to have your financial statement to be confirmed, even gap the terms. Following is the MVNA, and that is just highlights and summary of how the city was doing throughout the year, and then to person here. After that, we have the government-wide financial statements, which are on a cool basis, as I mentioned, and then after that, there are fund financial statements. Now governmental funds are not on a cool basis, they're on modified basis, but enterprise bonds and fiduciary bonds are on a cool basis. After that, we have notes to the financial statements, and after that, we have the RSI. Now we'll go into some numbers, this is your general fund, unassigned fund balance, as you know, you have, have you funds internally that roll into general fund? So you could see that separate development part went from 415,000 to 132,000 from prior to a hundred thirty-two thousand from prior year to current year. And that redevelopment fund that the loss had to do mostly with the fund you call the sales proceeds fund, and that's because there was really no revenue there. But you did buy a property behind City Hall for about two hundred nineteen thousand. That was expense there, so that fund bonds went down. And then the operating fund, what you call fund, one hundred, the operating general fund, that went down as well, and that has to do with the fact that you're non-spendable enough. You had, you bought other properties at pretty important statements that went for resale, so that goes on the balance sheet, but any inventory like that, that was held for resale, are offset by non-spendable. And then your budgetary results versus actual, but also in a negative, and we can talk a little more about that. So it did go down this year, and because of that is the percentage change that went from ten point eight percent for June thirty twenty-one to one point eight four percent for June thirty twenty-two. And then if you break it out by three categories, this is where I mentioned that your non-spendable went up. So overall, your fund balance wasn't effective as much, but non-spendable went up and restricted was close, just up a little bit, and then the sign did go down. And part of that, as I mentioned, were your budgetary results. So overall, they're negative of two hundred and three thousand, which is not, not as big of a factor because the redevelopment was about, I believe, three hundred eighty-nine thousand negative, so that contributed more to the balance going down. But this also contributed to going down. And although it looks like you overspent by one point nine million, you, I would not consider you overspent by that much because the biggest over expenditure you had was the ARPA, but that was just not in the budget, and you had that intergovernmental revenue coming in that wasn't budgeted, that is in access, which is in that one point seven million dollar excess you got revenues. And then the second biggest item of debt. Debt was partly offset by revenues, partly by transfer in from enterprise funds and the lot, the local sales exception that was used to pay down. And there were still an overage left. And then the third biggest overage was in the police department, and that you bought a dispatch tower, but that, that was issued, but that was in the previous year. So, so that's why it shows the negative in this. So there are some reasons to some of these sort of expenditures. And then they'll go to the tip, which is shown as a major fund, just like general fund is a major fund, as it's important to the city. So is debt service here went up a little bit, and the increment and transfer went up a little bit. So for twenty-twenty-two, it doesn't really look like there was much for a loss. It's only twenty thousand. But if you combine to beginning balance of three hundred sixty-three thousand dollar deficit, you get three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars deficit at year. So that's tip. Water fund, it looked like it went down, but you know, that I wouldn't be concerned. Overall, it went up, and overall, the net results were positive five hundred eighty-one thousand. Net income in that fund, the reason it's unrestricted, it looks like it went down is because part of it were investments you made in capital assets, like system improvements, machine and equipment. So that causes the net investment in capital assets to go up, and it went up even more because the debt associated with that went down. And similarly, we see in the waste water fund that the debt associated with your investment in capital assets. So basically, what you invest in capital assets, that debt associated with that was, went down because you paid off some. So that category went up, causing the unrestricted to go down. When overall, you did have a positive change in super fund of two hundred twenty-two thousand. So good on these two funds. And the reason this rest, where the justice center is here is just to show you that that fund does not have a predictable, consistent balance on an annual basis. So just, it's one of those things to monitor. And then we'll go to the debt. So business type slightly went down. The change is really on the governmental. So one of the biggest ones that increased the governmental debt payable was your City Hall because you issued five billion dollars for that in fiscal year twenty-two. And then net pension liability, that looks a little unrealistic because it shows as weavers going down to two million from four million, when the reason it went down is because weavers is based on the measurement date of six thirty twenty-one and recorded for six thirty twenty-two. So because it has a prior year measurement date, and that prior year had significant increase in investments, you, you should expect that to go up for six thirty twenty-three because for six thirty twenty-two, there was no increase in, in monthly income. And this is why the city plan one is showing increases from two point five to three point one million in net pension liability because this is based on the same date. So this is measured as of six thirty twenty-two, recorded for six thirty twenty-two, and there was a four hundred, a three thousand dollar investment loss. So therefore, causing the net pension liability to go up. And then we'll touch on the management letter. So the first three comments were just repeat from the previous years. We continue to recommend that the city implement regular departmental internal audits. And we know there were difficulty in, you know, the staff, and so we understand it hasn't been done in the last few years. It is an important function, though, internal audit to complement external audit, especially with small departments that you can't break, segregate duties completely. It would be important to do this type of internal audits. So we recommended that again this year. Controls of a system user rights, we recommend again that those are looked at so it are more tailored to the job, so duties are more segregated in when it relates to the accesses that we skip. And similarly to information technology policy, we will look into something a little more in, in a formalized or improved, especially with the recent years of so much cyber attacks and other risks. Information technology. And then improving general ledger monitoring, I mentioned there were some corrections after year ran. Some of them were, for example, issues of debt or payments of debt that were not posted to appropriate funds. There was a pension that wasn't done yet for the year that finally came to do a field work. And there were other entries like committed fund budgetary fund. And there were some other entries that came in after field work. So, so we just wanted to make sure the city improved the general ledger monitoring so it's wrapped itself on a regular basis. And the last comment had to do with the procurement process. There were four contracts that we sampled, and two of them were not in compliance with your finance policy handbook. They did not contain all the proper documentation that that handbook required. So we wanted to let you know in this management letter comment that we'd recommend you either revisit that finance policy handbook or, or do, or insurance compliance for that. So those were the management letter comment, but as I said, the audit went smooth, and we did not report any significant deficiencies of material weaknesses. So, so that's good news. And I just wanted to end with that, and I wanted to turn it over to you, Mary, to see some of the questions. So any questions?
So she tested four procurement contracts, and two of whom are messed up?
We, two of them, we believe, fell under the clause in the purchasing policy that allows the manager to secure a contract that's the best fit. But we are going to review those policies in the coming months to see if they're up to date with the current activities of the city.
So do you think if she tested twenty, ten of them would be messed up?
Well, you know, whether it's those like bars on your graph where you're like tolerance.
Yeah.
No.
Which were the two?
Green dolphin, I believe.
So longstanding professional services contracts with providers. That's what we're trying to say. So green dolphin is always one that these guys have a hot problem with. Whiteberg's always one. Peter Cross is always one, right? So people we always.
So basically, what it, what our policy says, we should go out to bed every time?
Right.
I don't read the policy that way. The policy is specifically crafted to address this situation.
Do we, do we have to do that? Or can we just continue doing what we're doing?
When it comes to federal funds, we have to make sure we're following a procurement policy that's at least as strict as the Code of Federal Departments, CFR two hundred, part D.
Sarah and I have been mad about it, you know, but it's a, we're taking a look at the policy to bring it. The auditors are constrained by the policy.
They're looking at our policy versus what we actually do. Why don't we just change our policy? We can't change our policy because it doesn't.
No, we can't. We can't. Yeah, that's next month.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and our, and our policy and the concerns are the ones where the policy, I think it was your suggestion, talked about the manager having discretion to go with the best fit, right? So where we've been working with a longstanding vendor.
But we can change our policy.
Right, right. The problem is the redevelopment fund, redevelopment activities, right? You know, you tend to have providers that we've been working with now for fifteen years to do a building, right? And so, and typically, they're playing a construction management role or a financial advising role, and then subs in the CM world, subs under them are all bit out, right? So. But that policy was, you know, I mean, it's over a decade old. It doesn't reflect sort of what we've been doing in many of these projects in the last ten years.
Do you have to go out to bed on certain projects? Or is it just who's always been doing it?
Threshold is fifty thousand. If we go out, which is pretty high. And. But oftentimes, these contracts have a fee that's a percent of the project, right? And so I, you know, I don't, I think the time for this where we can do a deeper dive is when we look at the policy in the next month.
What about the implement regular departmental internal audits? Isn't that what you do, Sarah?
It is. So I'm happy to report that we've addressed all five of the management letter comments, number one and number four. I don't know where the camera is. Hi, Alina. You're over here. It's good to see you. Number one and number four, which is internal audits and then general ledger monitoring, I believe I've covered both of those with the auditors and with my team. We've started to delineate which accounts are going to be looked at regularly by whom. This is all also part of doing monthly reconciliations that June is just another month, and we move smoothly right into the audit. We have a timeline to look at password and the username controls, which I believe was number two or number three before June thirtieth. I have some IT policy samples in the wings to look at as we do a full policy overview. And I think that is at least four of the five. I can't quite remember the fifth, but we've responded to all of them, and all of them are on our radar to, to clear off of next year's audit. The IT policy may lag, given the, the timeline.
Yep.
But at least four of those I expect to have cleared before Alina and her team come back. She's over here. I'm looking at you on the, the screen.
So I didn't get a copy of the full report. Is that on the website? Is that on the website?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, so I can go read it on the website?
You can.
Everyone can?
Yes.
And then I don't know if this is the time for this or not, Sarah. You can slap my hand if it is not the time. But I'm wondering if we can get a balance on ARPA, redevelopment, law, any other of the funds that we have money's cashed in.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to pull that together.
Okay, perfect. And then last thing, I think it's GF O A. I didn't get, I don't know if we got our GF O A again. Did we get that?
So we did. For twenty-twenty-one, we received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. That is a submission of an annual comprehensive financial report. This is just basic financial statement. So we're not eligible this year. I mean, in FY twenty-two, the deadline is also six months after the end of your fiscal year, so that would have been December. I am hopeful that we'll have an opportunity to submit in twenty-three, but I, I have a tendency to overcommit. So we'll be looking to get back to the annual comprehensive financial report in FY twenty-four.
I think the first one we got, when you were here the first time.
It was.
Two in a row right there.
Absolutely. No pressure. I don't feel any pressure. That's what I feel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So a question I had on number five, where it says improve controls over procurement processes. That goes directly to what we just talked about.
Absolutely.
That's what I brought up first.
It does.
I know, but is there anything other than that, than those policies that you should be looking at?
It involves, you know, reviewing, I think, the financial policies as a whole, aligning them with our realities and current best practices, and then communicating. So the, you know, I was actually thumbing through a book I have at home of manager internal controls for local governments, a manager's guide this afternoon, and looking through the different levels of like the COSO internal control structure, right? So there's review, and then your policy, communication, monitoring, and it's just a cycle. They go around and around, and we're kind of at that. We reviewed, we have a policy, we implemented it, and now time has passed, and it's time to get back in it and reviewing it. So that will be taken care of with that project.
Anything else under that would be addressed? All right. Does anyone have any other questions? Alina, we're all set, if you are. Do you have anything else to our share?
Thank you.
Bye, Susan.
Thank you for another, another year. Thank you.
So we're on, now we're back on fifty.
Yes.
Which is, which is the, now it's going to be what, number seven? Let's just say we're doing all number fifty.
So I have in turn view a proposal to make an adjustment to the way invoices are approved here in the city. So one of the things that I picked up during my time away is that there might be a better way to do what we're doing while still maintaining the setting level of internal controls and segregation of duties. And that would be to remove council members from individual invoice approvals and to move the council just to a position of reviewing the warrant on a monthly basis. You would all still maintain access to COFAK online to see all of the invoices and who's approved them, and reviewing, as Alina mentioned, management's responsible for establishing internal controls and then reviewing that section of internal controls over invoice approvals. All of the controls are still in place, and I think it will save you all a little bit of time. Happy to answer questions you have about this proposal.
Don't jump it up and down.
I, I'm loving it. I mean, look, I mean, chief puts something in that says, or staff puts something in that says we, we need this item, or we, we're going to purchase this item, and we're going to question it at the time of the invoice? We're not going to do that. We never do that. We bring it up at the next meeting, or else we make a call to the city manager. This is the best way to, to go. This is long overdue. We should have been doing this a long time ago. Glad you brought it up, Sarah.
When were you thinking of implementing that? Immediately. I actually have two invoices on hold in my queue that were not manually directed to the appropriate council approval or non-council approval with a note pending results of Monday's meeting. So if you'd like to delay that, I'll reroute those. If you agree to move forward, I will continue on.
This, this complies then with the charter. The charter says call the council to approve the expenditures and so forth. That's why we traditionally have done that.
It does. So Dominic and I are reading the charter language. It says two members of council will sign on payment approvals and warrants. And our reading of that is that, you know, payment approval and warrant is an approval process. And when you have the warrant, that includes the approval to make payment right in it. It does not need to be done with this book.
And it also has all the details underneath it?
It does, and my, and I would, the current warrant has vendor name, invoice number, invoice inscription, dollar amount, and check number. And I would include expense account number and name. So now you'll be seeing all of the same data that you're seeing in COFAK's, except for the invoice image, which you still have access to if you wish to local.
Is there any place in there that has a description? Because sometimes you'll just see, oh, nineteen dollars. What the hell is that?
I do think that the warrant report has the description. We're limited to the number of characters that are in there. I did just put out a little five-minute training refresher video to, to my colleagues that talked about updating descriptions if it captures something nonsensical. But yes, there is a line for invoice description on, on the warrant.
Yeah, if we could get just a little description, that's helpful. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I think this is a good idea. Very good idea. I'll be a favorer. But there was a certain advantage in seeing these invoices to see what going into the water department, this sewer, sewer and water department, all the incredible expenses that they had, and over to the pool and uniform cleaning for the police department. It gives you an overall picture of what goes on in the city of St. Albans government on a regular basis. So I hope that this new system encapsulates that a little bit too.
Do you find that you are. Do you find that you are able to glean that information from the warrant report that's in your packet as well, or is that a little bit more difficult to discern?
That's pretty generalized.
Mm-hmm. So my suggestion is that that report will include an account number, an expense account number, and I'd be happy to share with you the logic behind account number structure so you can see, oh, this, this means water department, this means sewer department. You'll still have access to COFAX online as well. And well, if we find we don't like it in a month or two, we can revisit it.
But the warrants come through by department, right? Are warrants coming through by department?
I think it goes by check number.
It is by, in check number order, which allows you to see that, yes, all of our checks have been accounted for in this.
What I get is.
The monthlies.
Yeah. And so I see something different of it than the most of you see because I see it monthly by each department. I, I requested that from Tom a long time ago and Sarah's, you know, allowing you to continue to see it. So I don't know if anyone else wants to see it, but it gives me a good overview of what's going on each department every month.
If we go into COFAX, can we search by month? Or do we have to search by vendor or check number?
You can't search by check number because COFAX pushes the approval and the, if the check happens in network. You can go into COFAX and on the left-hand navigation menu, there's a bottom section called documents and you click on documents and you can search. What I would recommend doing is sort it by invoice date to see the most recent ones first. If you just want to take a sampling, that is, it isn't, it isn't filed nicely in there.
I think what we're most interested in up here is seeing by department. Expenditure by department and what is that expenditure? And that's how I see that.
I think it'll be easy if I, if I, if I have a question about one particular warrant, I can go into COFAX and everyone can see.
Absolutely. Or you could scan in whatever your questions are and I'd be happy to send you invoice links or have, have some help. Pull links to all those invoices and go directly to them.
I was gonna say, we have people, I know, once, one or two times every month it pulls the wrong number from the, like it'll miss the shipping or it'll pull last month's instead of this month's bill. We're, we're checking on that, right?
Absolutely. So I am now looking at every single invoice in the queue. As I mentioned, it just sent out a five and a half minute refresher video for everyone on what they should be looking for when invoices go through. And I've worked with COFAX to ensure that we have all of the validation features turned on, which will say, hey, you already paid this invoice number for this vendor, et cetera. So I think there's a, I mentioned in the memo, there's a slightly elevated risk that something will get through, but the department head and I are looking at every single thing. And I think that we're in the best position to catch those things as long as we're paying attention. It's our intention.
Actually, he's happy right now that I'm not going to be looking at these every one of those details, but actually. Um, so if anyone has a question, go through.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Sarah? Entertain a motion. Second.
Yeah, I'll move that we consider, or we adopt the proposed change to invoice review process.
Second. We have a motion second. Any other questions, comments? Karen, on all those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Karen, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sarah. And then we move on to what was on number 16.
We have a short-term grant anticipation note coming due next week and I'm asking for a six-month extension so that we can wrap up the final requisitions and see where we land. Yeah.
We move to approve of our authorization of our six-month extension on King Street State Grant Anticipation.
Well, second.
We have a motion second to approve an extension on King Street State. Have any questions? My only one is who, who are some of the outstanding invoices?
We have a couple grant requisitions still to pull. And Chip and I are working on those together.
Got some final reporting to pull together.
Okay. Any other questions? Karen, on all of the favor of approving the extension, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Sarah, I think you're done, right?
Well, my name's not there, but I have the number 17 here with me as well, which is a.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth.
Uh, we didn't approve that, so you're gonna have to wait till that one.
Okay. I'll go with, I'll go with.
I put that in.
Oh, you did, but no, I was just kidding.
Sorry, I'll go with Tom. I know how to delegate back up.
Right, number 17 then, which is the discussion on, considering the approval of Juneteenth as a recognized city holiday. Wait for that.
I'd be happy to. So in 2021, the federal government recognized Juneteenth as a federal holiday. Generally, our holiday schedule aligns with the federal schedule. And recently, one of our unions added it to their contract and we are requesting the council align the personnel policy to include it as well. Did I cover that?
That's a paid day off for city employees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And some, some, one of the unions has that already, I guess.
That's correct.
You want to align for the other union that's the same benefit, is that right?
And the union personnel.
Okay. And does, does that also mean the city, city halls closed? Like, because we already are closed on, on Juneteenth because it's a federal holiday.
We're not yet.
Jeff, that's the issue.
That's the ask.
Okay. All right.
So I care, I was, how many federal holidays do we celebrate?
All of them except for inauguration day. And then we also celebrate Bennington Battle Day and Taming Day. We have.
Taming is a float.
Black is a float. And all those are paid holidays? Yes.
I don't have a problem with the, with very aligning with federal holidays.
Okay. Some land state holidays.
State.
State. State.
That would entertain a motion to that effect.
I move we approve, uh, Juneteenth as a recognized city holiday.
Second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Second by Chad. Second by Bob. Any other questions for Sarah? Karen, on all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? There are none? And, uh, there's a holiday.
On, on this subject, are we as a city, is there any planning going on for anything around Juneteenth? Heard anything from BDI or anything?
Not that we're aware of. The BDI committee has been discussing it, but it's, seems unlikely that there's going to be an organized community event this year. There might be planning for next year.
Was, was that the event that took place behind, in the back parking lot, behind the museum?
It's a couple of that. That's right.
But nothing is sure.
It's not looking that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Sarah.
Mr. Hocken, where are we at now?
We're back in line with train derailments. Back on the rail.
Matt?
Okay. The rail.
Thank you for joining us. Matt Paul, appreciate it. Thanks for hanging out.
Yep, yes.
Turn it over to, just introduce yourself if anyone doesn't know you.
Uh, Chief Michael Harris in Holland City Fire Department.
Paul Valley, Holland Police Department. I'm one of the operations commanders.
So slowly here.
So we were tasked with, um, developing an emergency management plan for train derailments in the city of St. Albans area. Um, we didn't make copies of it, I can email or whatever we would like after this meeting. Um, but we do have one copy. If you want to pass it around, if you have any questions, we can go over it. Um, or we can read it and go from there.
What is it? A policy on train derailments?
It's just a action plan of if we do have one of the steps, the procedures, who we're going to call, what we would set up.
Where did you get the criteria for your action plan?
The state of Vermont, the emergency management.
Okay.
Yeah. We pretty much just cut copies based.
Yeah.
And then we added the correct numbers that we would need to call for the dispatch center for, uh, overall ordering. Um, and then the chief of the hazmat team for the state of Vermont. And we just put in the correct information.
Is this, uh, is this drafted for any reason other than it's something we want? Or is there funding associated with it on the state level? Is this something that the state plays?
We had a constituent reach out to Chad.
Yeah.
Right? Said, hey, how do we handle it if it happens?
No, I get, I get that. I was just wondering, is there just part of a state mandate also for?
I don't think so. I think it's just that request.
So the, um, the state doesn't have any mandated, because we have a real area, there's nothing associated, no requirements associated with our real area. Like, do they have to do reporting to, I don't know if the LEPC still does it, but the LEPC used to, you used to have to report to the state through the LEPC what materials that you may have that are toxic?
Yes, they do. They also report to the state hazmat chief. So when I spoke with him, uh, the railroad is constantly sending them what is going through the railroad at any given time, how many gallons, pounds, or what's crossing through at any certain time. So they have been sharing some of that information with me if they do have X amount come through. So the railroad, but from the state's eyes, the hazmat team, they're doing all the right things.
Okay. So does this plan that you have in front of you, does that have an evacuation plan or do we have a separate evacuation plan?
No, it has an evacuation plan as well of what, it doesn't talk about like if it was at site X where we would evacuate. It just talks about evacuation and then what we would do.
Okay. Do we have the necessary staff power to evacuate the city quickly? Did you?
I, in the 24 years that I've been around, we've had, I think, two or three derailments. We had one behind Food City and you never have enough power, manpower to do something like that. Um, we had, that was like in 2004 or 5, we had the buses come and take people out of the certain areas. Um, I think we're in better shape than most, but.
Does the National Guard help with that?
Fact that they could, um, depending on how long the event will be or what the impact is.
It's really, it, um, it really matters whether they're, whether they're on active duty during that time too. So if it happened to be one of the weekends that they're on duty, it's a lot easier. Otherwise you have to call the governor, get the, get the governor to activate the National Guard, the government's citizen. Now you're talking five, you're five, eight hours later and by then.
How does a community get notification when something we're, you know, be drastic? I mean, how would you get the notice? How, how does that happen? News, uh, 911, what, what do you?
I think the social media, uh, police department has a great social media.
I'm not reading, I'm not looking at social media. Well, sometimes I am, but at 3:00 in the morning or, you know, 2:30 in the morning.
Could we do a alarm alert like they do for when there's a hammer alert? I mean, that puts everything within a, anything that's pinging off a tower, it'll send them a message.
We do have access to be able to do that as well as social media and the news, plus the news media with, uh, what's going on. Um, it's something that we do have the capability of doing at central dispatch.
Is that included in the OMA?
No, but that can be now.
Like I said, we got it, we got it in our first storm a year ago.
Yeah, but there's not like a siren. Remember the old fires? There's nothing like that going on now, right? There's no kind of alarm, like a tornado alarm or.
There isn't, Tim, but even they can, they can send you a message. So even if your phone's on silent, it's, it starts.
Yeah.
Whaling at you.
Yeah, we've got those. I've got those for a test.
But even if your cell phone's on silent, it will, it won't buzz, it will ring. So they have the power to do that.
I think it's also important to understand that we're going to be there triaging and trying to deal with the immediate things and as soon as we realize what's going on, then we're bringing in the state level of people that has that and they're absolutely going to blast the media, the cell phones and everything. But they're going to be the experts and they're going to come over there and take over the incident from us.
So what it would be is the fire department role would be evacuation, maintain, contain if there was a spill, we contain until the hazmat team gets there. Pretty much at that point, we're going to turn over the scene because they have more equipment, they have ways to drill through the tanks to get the liquid out or whatever it is. They're going to assume all the responsibility of that scene. We'll be a joint command to help out the other, the smaller task.
Just out of curiosity, what's the response time for the hazmat team?
I don't know. Well, they could have, it depends. They got one guy in Bakerfield, they have one in Swan, they could have a couple guys here, but it's about an hour and a half to mobilize the rig completely.
Is it got Swan and Reg?
I think Reggie's still one of them.
Bill's still in Bakerfield. And the state DOC would be almost instantaneously activated, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
And that brings a lot of resources. Do we have any, um, mutual aid agreements with any Canadian departments or anything from north of the border?
Yeah, so in the Franklin County Mutual Aid Pact, there's Phelpsburg, Bedford and Clarenceville are all part of that mutual aid, Franklin County Mutual Aid Pact.
Yeah.
So we do have access to them.
Okay. And you still have the agreement with the border? They just basically wave them through if they come and their judge lights on?
Yeah, for the most part now, yeah. It's a little bit harder going across, but coming back, for them to come across to us is easier.
Okay. Any other questions? And this will be kept where?
This can, uh, we keep all of our policies at the fire station. I know the police department has the policy book too, um, but I can make a couple adjustments for the notification and send it off to all of you if you have something you want to add or you'd like to see, please send.
We're going to add this to our, uh, our S C O P with, uh, with, um, Northwest Regional Planning. This is going to be like appendix to it.
Okay.
How long is it?
It could be.
Okay.
It could be. I mean, if that's something they would want.
I think it makes sense to, to have a figure there.
Okay.
Is this something we have to approve or?
Just approve.
So can that, when you make a click and you send it down and you'll send it to us?
Go ahead and go.
And these kind of policies, these kind of procedures, we don't put on the internet or share with people just because we don't want them to try to find a weakness or?
Yeah, there's just no.
Yeah. You put a, find a weakness, try to exploit what we didn't think about?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Thank you for putting time and effort into this, Matt. And thank you for reaching out to Kathy and helping her out.
Thanks, Matt.
I want to thank Paul before you leave. The police have a great job at the Maple Festival.
I'm sorry.
The police have a great job at the Maple Festival. Thank you for the coverage, uh, security around that. And I know you may be leaving, but I just want to make sure you express that to your team that I thought they were very present, uh, providing understanding of no issues.
I understand that as well.
I understand that as well, we're, a couple of kids that have walked away from parents, found relatively quickly, uh, because we were right there. Yeah, nothing major, no arrests.
It was interesting to see the security around, um, around the main street, that area, and how you coordinated that with Marty's team, so thank you for, for that work, and, uh, I think it was, uh, well appreciated, so.
Glad everybody enjoyed it. Besides, a couple hours sprinkle late on Saturday was actually a fairly good weekend.
No one saw the security team follow you to me, though.
They usually go hard, I tell, I tell people.
They're playing close.
I tell people all the time, I said, they're, they're there, but you'll never know. Oh, thank you very much. Mr. Hocken, where are we now?
Uh, we're on, uh, what, we're back to number eight, and I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint, uh, existing members or current members, Lisa Marie, Charles Worth, and, uh, current existing member, Laz Stengus. Read both of those votes, uh, to additional terms.
To expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six?
Yep, it's firing May thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
So I have a motion second for the appointment of Laz and Lisa Marie. Trudy Good. I already had the call, call second, so all those in favor, say aye. Hearing on, uh, Laz and Lisa Marie, assigned to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Can you do one say how much, Mr. Mayor?
Done. He's still fourteen.
Just, just a quick thing, I did go to that, I did go to one of their meetings that are talking about, uh, creating a, uh, French, uh, historic French district. The tree, in the majority of the tree streets, it's a, it's a very good board, and they work very well together, so I was impressed.
Thank you, Chad, alright, we're moving on to, I know number seven, this is where Chip comes in for a few things. Second reading of the, uh, zoning amendment to add twelve North Elm Street to the design review district.
The property owners have asked for the.
Would you introduce yourself?
Yes, sir. Director of Amendments to the Zoning. The property owners of twelve North Elm would like the property added to the designated downtown for San Almond. The city council actually approved that, that's been sent on, and the Vermont Downtown Board will be considering that, um, in a couple of weeks. But one of the requirements is that their property needs to be in a design review district or an equivalent type of zoning end. Uh, so this is something that's been working through the Planning Commission, first meeting with the city council, this is the second meeting, and this would be the final piece toward, um, that property's requirements for downtown designation. Just to reiterate, when it's something that the property owners requesting, when a historic building is involved, and the Planning Commission agreed, they want it to be in the design review district, then let's put them in the design review district. It, it's applicable, so, so it came forward to the city council.
And the owners understand the event?
Yep.
Having heard the first reading, uh, and then the second reading update from the Director of Planning and Development, I'll make a motion to, uh, allow twelve North Elm Street, uh, to, uh, go into the design review district.
So, motion by Tim, second by Chad, uh, to add twelve, uh, North Elm to the design review district. Any questions for Chip, or any comments? Hearing on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, Tim, we're back to you for a second reading, uh, zoning amendment for multi-dwelling overlay districts and fifteen low rooms.
It's been a longstanding priority of the city to redevelop the Fonda site. Current market pretty much dictates that it's going to have to be housing if it, in order to produce not only the community good of residential units that we sorely need, but also the level of investment that will provide the tip increment necessary for, um, what we put into it for the public improvements. The idea was to create a special multi-dwelling overlay district that would, that's designed to pretty much create the type of apartment buildings that you see on Maiden Lane. Um, and not only could be used at the Fonda site, but also could be used at other similar sites in the city that were once commercial and industrial, but due to the current market, may actually be more viable into the future as residential. We could activate, the city council could pass another amendment to the zoning in the future someday to activate this over any other parcel of land, and make this kind of residential development, uh, possible on that parcel as well. But we're looking at Fonda right now, the Planning Commission spent a few months going through this. The, um, the amendments were shared with the, uh, there were flyers that were sent out to the neighbors that abut the Fonda property. It would allow, um, residential use. It would, um, require that, that residential use means structures of ten or more housing units. And that's really only in the case where residential use wasn't otherwise allowed on this, in this particular zoning district or this particular property. It would require one and a half off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit, at least. It would, um, allow a maximum density of a dwelling unit per fifteen hundred square feet of lot area, and height of seventy-two feet, which includes rooftop equipment, so not just the stories. Um, it would allow parking and access facilities to be shared in setbacks. So if you have two, two separate properties that, that might wanna share a parking lot, they'd be able to have that in the setback, where otherwise you can't.
Chair, just one quick question before you continue, please. Seventy-two feet, is that from the, so if it's, if you're, it's just saying a walkout basement, is it from that point up? Or is it the other side where it's, might only be?
You look, you look from at grade of the land.
Okay.
And you would also look at the, uh, if there's a slope, you'd look at the average, you choose the middle of the slope.
The middle of the slope, okay.
Yeah.
So it could be higher than seventy-two feet then, at the highest point?
At its height, depending, if you're, yeah, on the lowest point of land, it could be higher than seventy-two feet.
Correct.
It doesn't require it has to be seventy-two feet, it's a ceiling, it's not a.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a middle, it's a maximum, and it requires, it's, in many ways, we're thinking of, there might be some tall air exchanger that has to go on the, on the roof, or something like that, where you have to take that into account, so. Typically, the top stories worth of height on a building like this is actually taken up by rooftop equipment, not by, um, not by actual, not by actual floors. It would require that, that this development not just be some isolated apartment building in the middle of a big parking lot. The Planning Commission wrote in that it has to be connected to the city sidewalk network, it has to be on one of the city's class two or class three streets, or class one. And it, and it has to have at least, when you take the building out of the equation, and then you're looking at the rest of the land, which might be parking lot, which might be trees, which could be anything, at least ten percent has to be space where people could gather, just, you know, lay out and read a book, or, you know, uh, have a little meal among some of the residents, you know, whatever, what have you, to recreate, so that not only is it a place that would have to have some areas where people could get out and just sit and hang out, but also it has to be connected to the way people get around the city and access everything else that the city has. Um, and also that shade trees should be maximized on the site, that's something the Planning Commission particularly put in. Shade trees shall be planted, screening, bush areas, wherever they could, uh, be located on the site. Um, and it would require conditional use review through the, uh, Development Review Board. And the final part of the amendment is that it would be assigned to that portion of the Fonda site that was not subdivided off for the current rail dispatch center.
Chip, now, I envision this to be a type of development that would not be typical of a normal street in San Almond, like say, for instance, we wouldn't have Brainerd Street become a multi-dwelling overlay district, correct? This is more like a lot of dense development.
Right.
Should we, should there be a requirement that there be two ways to get in and out of the development, no matter where it is, that they're, just not, for instance, let me give you an example, Heflin Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Heflin Lane could, could eventually become a multi-dwelling overlay district, but they would only have one way in and out of there, and it would be very dense.
You know, I, you know, the city council would have to specifically allow that to happen. In this particular case, not only are we creating this idea of a multi-dwelling overlay district, but we're also specifically only assigning it to Fonda right now.
Yeah.
That's the only place where it could happen.
And that's gonna have two ways in and out, right?
Right, yeah, and so typically, the way we've approached that is that when we have a large site plan, a big new development, we, we bring in the fire department and the police department, and we, we talk about the access issues, being able to get in and out, and we talk about, should there be a fire hydrant way up in the lot? We have that conversation with them, that's typically when we've done it.
Okay, so it's nothing that you think we would need to make a requirement? As becoming a multi-dwelling overlay district, you must have this, you don't think that's necessary?
I, I would steer us away from that, because I don't wanna create a requirement for two curb cuts if we have some project where it doesn't make sense, but they have to do it based on the zoning. I'd rather it be part of the D R B's ability to see all the, all the recommendations that are coming in, see the recommendations for public safety, and at that point, under conditional use review and zoning, the D R B has the ability to say things like, this needs to be moved over here, or you need another access over here, or you gotta put a hydrant over here. The D R B can do that as part of site plan review and conditional use review, and, and that way they'd be able to see exactly what's happening, what the concerns are, and what they think the right fit would be.
I don't know if I can ever envision in my mind, anything that I want as large as Fonda only having one way in and out, but.
Well, this, Fonda, the way it's currently envisioned, would have, at least, actually would have, there's one concept we've seen now that has a one-way in, but it also has a new city street with two curb cuts on that city street.
Yeah, okay. So that's a thought, the other, my other question, or my other thought is, do we want to ensure that anything that's as dense as this has some development association that is required to be set up by the developer to take care of things like, uh, problems we would see in a very dense development?
Traffic.
Uh, do, do we, do we want to make that part of this? Or do we, are we gonna say that we're gonna let the D R B or the Planning Commission make that a requirement of that development?
These are apartments, right, they're not condos, so.
Apartments, yeah.
They're apartments, so that, I mean, the, the.
Okay, so?
But the, that's part of your rent.
So I, if I could, if I could.
Well, I tell you what, there's a lot of places around the city that I'd like to go talk to the landlord about.
Probably should.
And we're talking about a hundred-unit, uh, complex?
Yeah, but if I'm a renter, I don't wanna pay the rent and then pay an association fee on top of it.
No, it's not a big association.
It's a pay, but it's paying association, he's just saying.
You don't have to have an association.
Have a board that could be, issues could be addressed with, on the homeowners association like in a condo.
Yeah, there's homeowners associations where you don't have to pay an association fee. So they, they are the management of the roadways, there's the management of, uh, color scheming, there's a management of, uh, when to put your cash out.
That's renters, or is that homeowners have that kind of thing?
It doesn't matter what it is.
Because that's all owned by one, so the person that owns it would be all that, all that, all those people.
Person that owns what?
So I mean, let's, uh, let's turn this down, so Marty or Chip, if Bethel Court or Cherry Tree Court, there was an issue, would you reach out?
Well, there's, there are two different, Bethel is owned by one individual, Cherry Tree are individual condos.
But.
But the condo association.
Yeah.
Like Tim is referring to, would give you a point of contact to be able to go to that association president to deal with.
So what, where Fonda is provisioned to be set up is, right now, there's two developers, there's a nonprofit housing developer, and then there's a market rate housing developer, and the parcel's provisioned to be divided up between the two, right, subdivided, right, so. There isn't, I don't see the common elements that would lend to a.
Well, I don't mind it if, if, if someone says, hey, look, we have the regulations in the city to take care of that, but on occasion, Marty, and maybe you Chip too, has said about certain landlords that we're the babysitter of that landlord, because we're always gonna, we always have to go and do something, or always have to go and say something. But if there is an association that is in place in a sizable development, um, then that association should be taking care of that.
But I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of Willard Square, right? So Champlain Housing owns Willard Square.
Willard Mill, yeah.
Or Willard Mill Square, excuse me.
Williski?
No, Stone Street.
Oh, 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 okay, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It'd be a sample of a large building. So if we have an issue with Willard Mill, how do we, how do we handle it?
We go straight to Champlain Housing, Chris, and we have contacts with them, and we, we know, we know who to call, and they work with us, and I think that, one of my answers to your concern, Tim, is that it's actually the city ordinance, it's not the zoning, where we have a better ability to directly, uh, address issues like garbage pickup, uh, public health and safety, and we're able to make, um, changes to the ordinances as necessary, and things don't have to be grandfathered like they often are with zoning. In the case where we found that we were babysitting property owners, because we had to, we were giving them a notice every time before we fined them, we found that both through the way we operated the program, but also through changing the ordinance, we were able to come up with a method by which we just start fining again, like, we're not babysitting anymore. If you violate something you violated before, we will just send you the fine, and we've actually gotten some of those problem property owners to be more responsive and to prevent such, and, and there are always, there are always times where you're left only with your, um, your final recourse, to initiate a court action or to amass so many fines that you need to take it to the next level. Every once in a while that'll happen, we have those tools. It, sometimes that takes longer, but we eventually get the results we need.
Let me, let me just sharpen my pencil for a second. Is it, is there an ordinance in the city of San Almond that says that I cannot have an unregistered vehicle in my driveway?
Yes.
There is?
Public health and safety ordinance.
Marty?
Well, I don't, I don't think there is.
You have an unregistered vehicle in your yard.
We just had someone here a year.
PHSO, AKA the Hawkins ordinance, right? Finds vehicles as, it's, it's trash, right, and so, you know, and there's any number of qualitative descriptors that influence whether that vehicle can be deemed to trash from their order to be removed, right? One of those indicators is registration, but, you know, you let your registration expire, you're, it's not trash.
Yeah.
But you have it sit there for three years, and follow the disrepair, and not move, and the grass will all move around it.
Or my motorhome, or my pop-up camper, or my other stuff, I mean, and who, I don't know if they're, if we, if, if that's strong enough, where if there was an association with rules that says, that, that state, before I become an occupant of that property, these are things I can't do.
I mean, yours can say essentially, but the association would be talking to the agency.
Yeah, and, and not like that, but the other people in the association would be able to enforce it on their own, rather than the city having to go do it, and I, I'm just trying to make a very, a, a, a very dense development into something that doesn't become an eyesore, because there's so many other things around there that we don't have any control of.
And that happens sometimes.
And there's no controlling entity other than us.
I would, I would suggest we let the zoning allow and direct the initial birth of the development, but we continue to use the city ordinances, and continue to adjust the city ordinances to deal with those ongoing issues.
While we deal with it in the development agreement?
Yeah.
I mean, this is.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out as a question, right?
I guess I can.
I'm against it, but.
And part of the issues that you might be observing also has to do with, you know, across the street, which has a common element in the middle of it, with a gate that has been really hard to operationalize, and so we've got a whole bunch of people parking in there that shouldn't be, right? Fonda's a really different thing, there isn't gonna be that, there isn't gonna be a gate, there isn't gonna be a common element type of thing, right? And when we have more information about what it's gonna look like as the development comes together, if we still have that concern, we can address some of it there, I think.
As long as someone's got an eye into a couple of these concerns, I guess, most of the concerns I hear from people that hear about this is excitement, but a, a little bit of fear of, is this gonna become later on something that we don't wanna have there in an eyesore, you know, something that looks bad? Because, just because of neglect, or, okay, we're done selling out our part of it, let's just not mention it anymore, and now everyone's there for a free-for-all. Okay.
Another way of looking at this is, the development agreement's actually a good thing to bring up. We own Fonda, we're not gonna let go of it till we have the agreement we want. This zoning change needs to pass in order for us, to enable us to enter into this agreement. Maybe we never assign this overlay district anywhere else in the city ever again, maybe it's only for Fonda. But in the case of Fonda, we will be able to have more influence by virtue of the fact that we own the land now, and we're not gonna give it up until we've entered into the agreement we want to enter into.
Okay, I'm good.
Uh, any other questions for Chip on this? Was that discussion after a motion, I have lost track, so.
No motion, no?
So I entertain a motion to, um, to put the overlay district.
So what?
Motion from Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad, any further discussion? Hearing on, all of the papers, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing on, motion passes. Chip, you have the four-way stop on Gildan of your court?
Yeah, if you remember, we. Yeah, if you remember, we, um, we received at least one neighbor or resident concern about this intersection. Because it only has two stop signs at it currently, uh, and they aren't opposing each other. It's, uh, one at the end of Yule Court and one on Lincoln Avenue going south. But, um, we think this is a good intersection to normalize by making everyone take their turn when they get there.
Any questions on this? Discuss it last meeting, this is a second reading. Do I entertain a motion, um, if there's no question to the comments?
I know that we accept the ordinance amendment to add four stop by the Gildan, Yule and Lincoln Ave.
Are there motions or a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Uh, second by Bob. Any questions? Hearing on all the papers, AI. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We are, I think we're to the mayor's, we're going there. A couple of things, Marty, uh, great job on, um. I know it's not just you guys that cleaned the park up after, I mean. Uh, but, um, Marie and I, I take the Marines under here a little bit, but we talked about that. I went by at seven o'clock at night and you would have never gone, there was, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand people in the park. Traffic was all gone.
If a girl's softball team came in.
Yeah, we did it.
Yeah, through the park as well.
But the barricades were gone, dumpsters were gone, all that was gone. I thought, um, that you did a great job of that.
Thank you.
Marty, what type of hit does the lawn take in that?
It's, if it doesn't rain, it's not bad, it's pretty resilient, but if it rains and they run it up, it can get pretty nasty.
So it was okay?
Uh, it's just, we've, we've got, after best meeting with them next week, it's a slippery slope, you know? They say, well, we're gonna have one vehicle in there and before you know it, every vendor in there drives their vehicle down in there and you've got a dozen vehicles, so. It's a matter of taking care of that, but it, it survived pretty well.
Uh, Marty, on the, um, weekly report, I saw your comment was relative to class two grants that we have now received in six years. Is there some?
We're working on it.
Pressure we can apply towards that and, uh, could I know?
It's understanding the criteria and, um. You know what, I think we're fifth most in the region, but I think traffic count should go towards it, uh, condition. And so we're having a conversation with the state to try to get a better understanding of how we can.
To take upper well, upper well, is that a?
Upper well in your Congress, we're just like, this year the town of San Almond's, um, applied for Congress as well. So we're hoping if both of us had applied, we would get some, but unfortunately.
Do we know how those decisions are made?
That's what we're trying to understand.
So who do we have on the tap? As transportation advisory.
I don't know.
For regional planning.
I don't believe we have anyone right now. That's, uh, actually, I'll have to find out, Rob was. Rob Reed was, I'll have to find out, I think he still is.
Because a lot of those recommendations on what road to pave and what roads to kind of wait for another year come from that.
Yeah, those are the, yeah, for sure, the state roads, they do the state roads. I don't know if they're able to look at all the class two applications that go to the town.
I think the DTA has an offline discretion.
It's the district, it's the maintenance district. And we're, we're discussing with them some ideas for taking into account. We, we already get dinged on mileage, I mean, our transportation block grant from the T bill is based on our mileage of our different class rows. Our position is that the class two paving money should not only be based on mileage, but it should be based on traffic counts too. The city serves the, everyone in the county comes to the city, they're all driving on our streets. And I don't, I, and we think that should be made a part of their scoring criteria.
Another conversation again with Joe Flynn as well.
Below Joe. I was just saying Joe could. Yeah, sure. They're also looking for water for their new V-Trans.
What's that?
They're also looking for water for their new V-Trans, you know, so we value that, so. Ageable basis.
Um, and thank you again, Marty, for the crew cleaning up, um, down the Fonda site and the road and, uh, trash and whatnot and.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just Thursday, I think.
Yeah, Thursday, the dispatch centers have their open house, so. Place looks good and I think they're using a friendly rig today.
Yeah, we got that on the sub two.
And then, uh, the other piece of this was, uh, restorative justice, I guess I'm naive to. Uh, so, uh, what was stated was total of forty-eight pre-trial services cases and seventy-nine tamirac cases currently open. I don't know what either one of those are, it might be worth, um, having a presentation to talk on this a little bit.
I'm interested in that too, because I was curious about that program.
Yeah, I don't, uh, seems like they're having some successes, it'd be nice to have them come in and, um.
So pre-trial is for court diversion, I believe. So before they get to, before they get in front, in front of the judge, they can work out an agreement for restitution.
That program also houses people as well?
Yes, yeah.
So that was news to me.
Yeah, so, uh, what you have is you have someone that's, um, that has been approved for parole. But they can't go into parole unless they have housing. So sometimes they'll languish in prison because they got nowhere to go. So they're.
Probation, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You mean probation?
They've been approved for probation, but they won't let them out of prison until they have a place to go, so they don't, just don't.
And the Samaritan House used to have the DOC grant to also help with that, so it's just interesting that they.
Yeah, now they, now they have, they rent apartments, you know, and they've put a, they call them a circle of support and accountability. To help these people like get their driver's license back, get them to go grocery, you know, get them to the stores so they can grocery shop.
And that funding comes from DOC or is it all the city residents?
No, DOC, right?
The DOC.
It's a two-county regional program. Does primarily court diversion, pre-trial. Restorative justice programs and transitional housing. And we put up fifteen, twenty grand. Next month or the month after, um, we're gonna be looking at a proposal to renovate the old police station. Uh, current fire station, uh, into offices, uh, for the restorative justice center. And probably some apartments upstairs, so.
Do any surrounding communities kick in also?
Absolutely not.
But it does benefit not just city residents, correct?
So it's a two-county program, uh, and the city's involved because as the Shire Town and County seat. This population's here al- already, right? So if we don't engage and participate, there's still gonna be decent apartment over on Kingman Street. We just don't have an entree in the conversation. There's absolutely no willingness to get the county to support it. You know, we've, we've put out this as well, probably around.
It's our problem.
And so, you know, the, I think, um. I do have some ideas for how it, um, we might be able to regionalize it a little bit, um, but. You know, we've also considered just saying we're only gonna serve residents of San Almond City and San Almond Town. You know, the, the grants are pretty well tied up saying that you will serve both counties if you take our vote. And so, um. There's a deeper topic, you know, we can, we have to talk to some further about it. Those are the broad strokes.
Is there a new director there, Dina left?
Uh, Harmony's, yeah, have you not met Harmony?
I'm excited.
Oh, we have?
I don't think, I was gonna say, I don't think I've met her. Dina was the last one that I.
Okay.
So, I did it for a future meeting.
Um, a couple of things, um, Chip, tree planting and that happening this spring?
It's actually gonna be June now.
Okay. I have a call regarding wildlife, actually a rabbit fox. And the question was asked, do we have animal control which would not handle that, right? So, and we continue to get the calls as I think you've seen on the skunks as well. I think we need to come up with a plan to address some of these issues. I know we, we talked about pest prob, but I don't think pest problems skunks. I think wildlife is hard to find someone to, to trap or remove wildlife. We may wanna do some.
So we're getting everyone in the city a better compost bin?
Right, like all the composting we're doing.
An off-the-ground compost bin?
I. Yeah, I mean, maybe we could, uh.
Public works.
For dive on this, you know, but.
We've got guys that will.
Oh, I know you do.
The instances that we've reimbursed people for renting for their own provider, it's worked pretty well, honestly, right, and so.
Well, no, and I'm fine with that, I mean, we gotta find the, the right agency that can handle.
Yeah.
Bigger wildlife like this.
And so, you know, maybe, maybe it's as simple as let's figure out who can handle it and then we allow the homeowner to make the call and work out the cops. So.
Jimmy, question, do we still have a rare rambler you're doing?
Not that I know of, I've seen it. Marty, you seen the bird?
Not in the city, not this year. The rabbit fox though may be game worn too, they should be identified.
This fox was thought to be rabid.
Did anyone ask the fox?
What happened?
Did anyone ask the fox?
I haven't thought of that. And good greenup day, thank you, Nicole, I want to touch base with you on that before you go.
Okay.
Uh, Marie, uh, Bob, thanks for helping out. And the Girl Scouts, uh, were very active as well, so. Uh, we'll move on to.
Thanks Chad, I mean, Tim.
Thanks for.
I don't feel kind of overboard, so.
Oh, wow.
I thought you were Chad.
In interest of time, I'm gonna call it off right now. We're gonna start with Bob. Council reports?
We had a pretty successful greenup day over in Barlow Street area, better than last year. And, uh, the only other thing I would mention was, uh, we talked a little bit about upper welding. We need to pave that, I guess, but even at the present time, you walk, especially westbound on Upper Weldon Street, it's dangerous because you. There's no sidewalk there and, um, the pavement's all broken up and there's nowhere to turn or get out of the way when a car comes. Because obviously you have to walk facing the traffic. So is there any idea maybe in the distant future to put a sidewalk in through there on, uh, Upper Weldon? Nothing that I'm aware of, but it would be a good idea to. Think about it in two, three, four years because. I've seen a lot of people walk there and this is, it's not, not a good pedestrian situation.
It could be a city town collaboration.
Connect, yeah. Where's that, between Barlow Street and the? Yeah, talk about the, in Barlow?
Could be on either side, probably should be on the south side because that's just a field there, but just something to think about for the future.
There's a handful of, um, sort of missing links like that in the network.
Where's the city town line on that? It's up towards.
Just below where Doris Tarr used to live. I think the reason they didn't put the sidewalk in there was most of the kids up in that neighborhood, they wanted them in the street.
It's all worth the thought, that's all.
Anything else, Paul?
No, thank you.
Trudy?
I have something.
I don't know.
I know. Um, the, I guess there was quite a parking situation at the Maple Festival on some of the streets. Um, I spoke to a woman who lives on Messenger Street. And all the cars parked there on one side of the street, leaving a really long space for cars to be going both ways. And I guess she was out there for a good hour trying to direct people like Rubley. And there was a gentleman there, I guess, who was pretty.
Yeah, tenated.
Well, that's a kind word for it, but the police were called up there. So I don't think there was any action in the park, but the city street, she said. Um, the tractor parade, any big events in the city where people park on the streets, it causes. A really bad, unsafe situation. So she was wondering, is there a way that we could put like one-way, one-way during this event, like one-way? That was her idea. Or just to maybe, I don't know, but people are putting like rocks in their driveways and rocks on their yards. So people are parking and the people are getting mad and they're like backing their cars over the rocks. She, we talked quite a length, so I, I told her that I would bring it up here. But it sounds like it was, it could have turned into a pretty dangerous situation by the sounds of it.
Yeah, Messenger is a tough street. This year I noticed more than any time in the past, cars like on Congress Street were parked all the way up to Governor Smith Drive. Bank Street were parked all the way up to Smith, so.
And there's just, there's no, there's not enough, like bank, banking Congress have a little more room. But those narrower streets that.
Yeah.
That go this way.
I can mention it, Jason Weatherby is usually on the steering committees for those events to.
Yeah, she just said it's a big issue, it's not just the festival, but it's the other.
You had a job directing into the parking garage.
Big events that we have in the city, um, cause them, she, she said she hates it.
Do we know if the parking garage was full?
Was it full during the?
Festival?
I don't know, I couldn't find out.
Or parking complex, shuttling people in, I don't know, but or, her suggestion was people are going to park there. If we could just make signs that make it one-way, it would alleviate a lot of the problems.
Yeah, there also.
Um, just again, the light at Main and Newton, I can't, I emailed you about that, there's, that's getting a lot of chatter on. Um, front porch. Just the timing of the light isn't great. And I wondered, is there a way that that could be addressed before the Fonda, all the Fonda stuff happens, because that's a while.
We had these post signals come up and look at it.
Oh, you did?
And recalibrate it, but that was about a month ago, so if there's issues, I can have them.
Okay.
Come back.
I think it's.
Still not sensing.
Okay.
It's been years. Uh, if you're on Main Street and there's no one on Newton, it just cycles through the lights like there's someone on there.
Do you have to come down Newton a little further to get the sensors to kick in?
I don't think so, I just think it just.
No, Chad's talking about lower Newton.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe when, when the Walmart improvements were ordered by Act of Fifty. They improved that intersection a little bit, but they never. They never put, uh, actuation just on lower Newton. They could only do it on one street, so they, even back then, it was, the cycle was, we're always gonna do lower Newton no matter what.
I seem to remember it working, but.
Well, it might, I do know that one of the things we probably should do is find out where the sensors are looking on Upper Newton. And have, put a stop here on red side on Upper Newton, so the.
Sensors are, on Upper Newton are embedded in the pavement.
Uh, no, they're using the radar now up on the pole.
I had to tell a lady once to go down and wait and then it changed, so I thought, well, that was a long time ago.
Kind of welding works fantastic.
We should have hit that on our drive around today.
You can do it again tomorrow.
So you'll take one of that, Marty?
Yeah.
Trudy, anything else? Mr. Hawkins?
Might go last?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Had a complaint from the Amtrak crew with the, at the cream ring. They're crossing in front of the train when they wire the train to bring it up to, at the engine house. And they've told me they've had some near misses there. They, the trucks don't stop, they go ahead of them when they're backing the train around and even when they're lined up, go ahead. That, that, on Aldous Street.
So on that Aldous Crossing?
Yes.
Okay, I can send the email out.
So they're going to the parking lot where they're coming from.
Yeah, and when they're, when they're backing their train around, they'll cross right in front of them.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they don't stop and wait till they. And then comes out.
You'll send that to who, Marty?
Kirsten.
That one's not signaled, is it? There's no.
No, it's, it says yield on that.
Good. Anything else, Paul?
Same time soon.
Marie? Marie?
I don't really have any report from my board, but I do have a very positive comment that was given to me when I was coming, walking through the park for a minute or two. A lady said that she was sitting there enjoying the park, she said that she lives in Essex, and her and her mother come up here all the time because they enjoy our park and how beautiful it is. And she said, we come up here, we walk the dog, and she said, it's beautiful, and she loves the city for the way it looks.
She didn't park on Messenger Street, did she?
I don't think so, but I do. She wasn't the one that was yelling. So that's all I have, that's nice.
And Marie, you're getting your, right, we're going to address the parking issue, Lake.
Oh, Lake and, and.
If you get calls and no one likes it, send it to.
I had, I had a couple of neighbors that brought it up to me too about that, that intersection. And I said we were discussing it, but they, they really were, they're kind of on the thing for the stop sign. But it has been better, so we'll say that, so maybe once we get rid of the other two, we have three parking places on the north side of Lake, hopefully we'll see some improvement there, but.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Chad? Couple things. Councilman Hawkins has yielded his time to me, so. I got a few things, they're quick though. Graffiti, there's graffiti on a telephone pole on Cedar Street, it's purple graffiti. I don't know how to get rid of it on a telephone pole, but just a heads up.
On what side on Cedar?
It would be the west side, front of twenty-two.
We can hit it without pressure lock?
I want to tell Marty, the oak park grass looks absolutely fantastic.
I wish I could take credit for the fertilizer, but we might.
It's well mowed, it's well taken care of. As I'm on day, rather than if you would. I had a couple of people reach out to me about the Weldon Theater, thanking us for taking that over. There is grand, like, people have grand ideas of where they'd like to see that, basically a performing arts center is what a lot of people would like to see, a stage and a band, or, you know, the ability to have bands, they'd like to see it expanded upon. So just a heads up, gotten a lot of good press on that one. And then the last thing, Marty, someone has installed a handicap ramp on the corner, South Elm and Lake, southeast corner. I like the idea that they have a ramp, it can get up there, I'm really concerned, it's over, it's on top of the sidewalk on the corner, and I'm afraid someone's going to either hit it or a plow's going to crash into it.
I saw it, I didn't notice that it was on the, the end of their deck, right?
Yeah, yeah, that one corner, they got one brick, and it's right on the, it's right on the sidewalk.
We'll take a look at, yeah, we'll definitely.
So, I mean, I want them to be able to get it in another place, I'm just really cautious.
When's that go in?
It's been a good month, yeah, and three, two, two, three weeks, I'm really, I just.
Yeah.
I just don't want to pay for a couple handicap ramps every winter.
Right.
Is that something that, that a permit's required for, with something like that?
I think there's rules, there's laxation of the rules when it comes to handicaps.
You still need to come, you're still supposed to come to us and just discuss it.
It's, it's not like a fancy, fancy one, but it is, it is, so. It looks like it's going to be there for a while because they put matting underneath it so the grass won't grow. So, and they've taken off the railing, so it looks like it's going to be there a while. So, if we can work with them, just to.
That's, that's not owner occupied, is it? That's not so.
That's it, thank you, Chad, Mr. Hawkins, you got one or two things?
I thought if I'd go last, Chad would be shorter, but it didn't work, so I'm going to do it again. I'm all set.
They were quick. They were quick. Oh, you, you have nothing?
Word was good.
Oh, that was a good point?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Did work.
I want to take time on how much time Tim spent talking about their association. He said twenty minutes talking about.
That was, sorry, I thought you were going to put us behind schedule when he pulled up.
Did you remember Digger to call us tomorrow?
Yeah. Motion to approve warrant four twenty-eight twenty-three.
Motion, is there a second? Motion to approve a second on the approval of warrant from four twenty-eight, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing on, motion passes.
Motion to approve, reading minutes four ten twenty-three, regular reading.
Second.
I have a motion to approve minutes from four ten, and a second, all of the, any comments or amendments? Hearing on, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Minutes passed, approved. Any other business, city manager? Chip, you got any other business?
It's an effort tonight.
Marty, you good?
I would just say, after your request for the shopping center, I reached out to Ernie Pommel, he was very responsive and. Beautiful. Took care of that, so.
Nicole, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Trudy? Trudy, you're second?
Second.
Trudy, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Make note of the times, do what? It's a great opportunity to listen.